...of the United States of America, and here's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to the offer of Rob Bright position, we would appreciate it. I'm going to ask that the lady City Clark to call in.
The Navy medical, Randy Price, Jeffrey, Jerry Simpson, Jim King, Todd Copper, Mayor Taylor.
Okay. Number five is approved the minutes of the regular meeting of December twenty-third of twenty twenty-four, not entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number six is proclamation number twenty-five dash O-one and the human trafficking awareness month. We have somebody here that was going to speak on behalf of that. This is just a proclamation that we do every year and it just recognizes that there is a ongoing problem with human trafficking. It'll be noted, well noted, in our next authorization that we'll give to our police chief. I mean, it's a very sad state of affairs that we have to worry about how people are being treated. Whether they're in addiction or just in a bad place in their life because we all will find ourselves in bad places. You know, just as that you guys, as you're going through this month, just to just maintain an awareness that there are people out there that are a bit unfortunate. And I would entertain a motion that we pass proclamation number twenty-five dash O-one. Is there any discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number seven is authorizes police chief agency to sign AMOU between Our Rescue, that's the name of the company, in the Rainbow City Police Department, to purchase a digital forensic computer station to investigate cases involving human trafficking and child exploitation. This is a cost share or a memorandum of understanding stating that the city will pay nineteen hundred dollars for the computer station and Our Rescue will pay up to six thousand dollars and I've entertained a motion that we allow them that authorization. Is there any discussion? I'll just add to it that this goes in line with proclamation that we made in number six. It gives our detectives and the people that work over there in that side of the building just an additional tool and some extra strength and power in what they're doing in investigating human trafficking. We appreciate what they do. Jay Pales here representing that detective group and we seriously appreciate it. And the stories that he could tell, and I'm sure it's not something that anybody would want to hear, but it's devastating to those people's lives. And this gives us another tool and I feel just to do better work. You know, that I've entertained, well, we got a motion and second, is there any discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number eight, resolution number twenty-five dash O-one authorizes an application of the physical year twenty-five rebuild Alabama Act grant for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city is required to commit a hundred thousand dollars as racking funds to provide funding for their annual street resurfacing program. The city's planned annual paving program for physical year twenty twenty-five is approximately six hundred thousand dollars. And I've entertained a motion that we passed that resolution as read. Is there any discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number nine is resolution number twenty-five dash O-two, that's authorizes mayor Pedro to sign traffic signal maintenance agreement between state of Alabama and Aldott and the city of Rainbow City and I entertain a motion that you allow me that authorization. Is there any discussion? I will say that this has put us in an enhanced saving program that would go through all the main thoroughfares in Alamo County. It reaches from a tower through Rainbow City up and can include Gabston, Plinko and portions of even Southside. And with that, it creates an integrated traffic control system that's being managed continuously. Some of it's been done with AI, some is being done with camera systems and it's just really, really needed. It would keep us from having all these stack-up problems and afternoons during our rush hour, which we actually have now, which proves just that we have a great growing city right now. So this is something that really, really helps us a lot and we're thankful that Aldott included us. And the initial, I guess, the initial research that they did and the studying that they did, we weren't included. And we were able to go back and show that our traffic numbers exceeded what that study had shown. And Aldott immediately included us, which allows for us to have a better traffic organization plan. And with that, those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number ten is budget revision. That's for a park and recreation, this repayment from the Millie Henry Lake Association for decking boards on the pier at Rainbow Landing. And that will go the repairs and maintenance account number shown for three hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And I've entertained a motion that we accept that budget revision. Is there any discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number eleven is donation request for Liberty Learning Foundation. It's the Super Citizens Program. It was a request for twenty-five hundred dollars and that will sponsor three of our classrooms here at our middle school. And I'll entertain a motion that we pass that donation request. Is there any discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number twelve is sponsorship request for Southside Competition Cheerleading Squad competing at the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship in Orlando in February. What would be the pleasure of council?
Just I would recommend that we donate five hundred dollars towards this. We're so proud of you guys. We're going to recognize the fact we're proud of all our young people and what you do for us and recognizing the city of Rainbow City and so on and so on. And we're just so proud of you guys and I would like to make a motion that we donate five hundred dollars to the cheerleading.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Would you guys like to speak? Anybody? Come on now. I thought you were saying that was your smoke bottle. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you for what you do and good luck. Number thirteen is sponsorship request. The Chambers Hundred and Twelve Annual Meeting and Awards launch in on Friday, January twenty-fourth at the main year of eleven thirty. And what would be the pleasure of the council?
Mayor suggests that we, I'd like to make a motion that we do a dollar sponsorship for five hundred dollars.
There's a motion and a second. Those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Number fourteen is department reports to have any of our department heads that'd like to speak. Kenneth, do you want to come up and talk just a minute about what we got ongoing as far as screening the city? I'd like to hear your voice, Kenneth.
We're just going to talk about cleanup. Recycling is done real well. We probably done about this year, we have done in the years past, a lot of some years past, but that's a part that we call the years to do news. And Southside is, we partnered with them for a little while and we started a good program in Southside. And when they actually take over their own, they do it now, but there'll be, there'll be really great coming down there. So I'd like to thank everybody at that point. And as y'all have seen, we have learned from a lot of things, but we have learned what to do and what not to do. And we know what to look for. So we did very well on the recycling. And we'd like to talk about Tim Hales and his guys that comes out of the county. And Tim will call me and we always start on Black Creek Parkway. Black Creek Parkway is a hot spot for tries. So we started over it yesterday, Friday, and they have run full level today. And I gotta give Tim credit, if he's got a couple hours, he'll call me. And he's done enough of it that he kind of knows what to do and what to do. So I can't say enough about the county and that program. Have a laugh. We appreciate you, Kenneth.
Anyone else? Michael, you want to cover the things with the street department, what we went through, or do you want me to cover it when we did our comments? I can't think through. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I gave you the easy way out there. Anyone else, any of other department heads, we'll go to council members, reports, comments, and we'll start with Mr. Box. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, again, I want to reiterate how proud we are of you ladies for representing Rainbow City and Southside at the national cheer competition. We're excited for our annual, your biggest fans. Anytime we can do anything within our fiscal means to help young people, that's what we're going to do. Now, again, with everything, there's limits and responsibilities, and we know that you guys will uphold what we're sending you out to do. We're so proud of you for that. Also, as we've all watched during the last week, the horrendous fires that are going on in the Los Angeles area. It just reminds us even more about how well, how well put together our first responder system is. The fire department, the police department, and again, I admire those guys so much when I'm watching on TV what they're doing, what they're going through. And I know we have the same type of situation here and I'm confident that if something like that ever happened to us, that we could depend upon those people. Because you gotta do a great job and we're so proud of what you do and what you accomplish. I would also like to remind everyone that as the school continues to go forward, that we have a lot of, what's the best way I can put it? Interruptions with snow days and then more snow days and everything else. And I'm just so proud of the way the young people have stepped up. We figured, you know, after the snow day that we probably wouldn't have anybody here the next day, and then the school was full. And so, young people get above that. And I know I'm talking to you guys because you're here. But I want to tell you this, I'm really proud of what you guys do for our town and for everything that you do and for the sponsors as well. Thank you, Coach. So God bless y'all and please let me have to say, Mr. Prince.
Thanks, Ray. I'll start out, as Councilman Bass said, we're very proud of you ladies. And I know that you'll represent this area very well in Orlando next month. So good luck and congratulations on getting together. It'll be something you'll get to remember the rest of your life. So don't enjoy it. Have fun. The recycling program, Mr. Prince spoke on that just a little bit, and I want to commend him and all the employees out for that. I bring a lot of stuff up there and even started breaking it down. So. I've always broken it down. Basically, yeah. But it, and working with Tim Hales at the Sheriff's Department, I think that, and helping out with Southside starting up. I'm very proud to be a part of this council with this mayor up here and representing what I think is the very best city. Not just in Alamo County, but maybe the state of Orlando. I'm a little biased, obviously. But we do have an opportunity to make a difference in the world and just the small difference, little things in our life. And so I want to say thank you to Kenneth and his guys for what they do. You come out here after Christmas or even if they're a regular Sunday night or weekend, it's, there's stuff piled up and in the road and behind the trailers. And it's a big job. So thank you guys for what you do. And I hope everyone had a really special Merry Christmas this year and enjoyed time with their families on the New Year holiday. And as Coach Bass said, a snow day, I think we all enjoyed getting a day off last week. And it was a lot of fun. Luckily, our street department took care of business. I was up early and was seeing a couple of guys on Facebook joking around. They have some of our guys in the street department. But they had worked all along. You know, they planned ahead and we're very appreciative for everything that they did. They drug several semis up the hill from Little Ridge. So just thank you guys. We couldn't do it without you. So, and that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you very much and thank y'all for being here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start by saying also very proud of Southside Cheer for all you have accomplished. Very proud to be able to sponsor you and your trip. I also just want to say, I feel like Mayor Taylor has done an excellent job in showing that Southside High School is our high school here in Rainbow City. And so we're always proud to support y'all anyway that we can. Also want to say thank you to the Millie Henry Lake Association for being our partner down there at Rainbow Landing. Groups of homeowners like Millie Henry Lake Association taking pride in their property are what make Rainbow City beautiful and a great place to live. And we really appreciate them joining us in that effort. Tim Hales in the sheriff's office, those guys do a phenomenal job. Typically, when you think about law enforcement or deputy sheriff in Alamo County, you think about Rainbow York Patrol or SROs and all that kind of stuff. But Tim Hales and his end-to-end work crew have a huge impact on the beautification in our entire county. Those guys work twelve months out of the year, freezing cold, a hundred and twelve degrees, doesn't matter. Tim Hales is out there with those guys picking up trash. And we really, really appreciate what they do. Also want to note, just a partnership between government agencies that took place during the snow. There's always just so much interworking between government agencies, whether that be all the law enforcement agencies in Alamo County municipalities, the sheriff's office, fire departments, the Alamo County EMA, everybody just works together so well. And everyone wants to hear the question of, oh, is that our jurisdiction or is that our responsibility to take care of that? We just ask each other, hey, what do you need and where can we help? It's just, days like that, you really see how effective that is. And I think that that is what makes these groups in Alamo County and the leaders within these agencies so great. Paving, very excited about our paving projects, our street department under the leadership of Mike Stevens, getting a lot known there. Last thing I want to say is I know we talk about Merry Christmas and New Years. That's a hard time for a lot of people. I just want you to know statistically speaking, that hard time is not over yet for those people who go through that. So a lot of people who don't enjoy the holidays and New Years as much due to whatever circumstances in their family or their personal life, statistically speaking, that hurt and pain is still going on. So I just want to remind you of that. Reach out to the people that you know and you love and you care about and tell them that you care about them and that you owe them. That's all I have.
Mr. Harper?
First and foremost, I'm always proud of our young people. If there's something y'all guys do on Facebook, you share it, it's on my webpage or on there. And I'm excited for you guys to go to this competition and hopefully you bring us back a prize for it. But all of you guys are such great ambassadors. Island children, whether male, female, whether it's the bowling, whether it's the junior high basketball team won the county championship. You know, cheerleaders, you know, the girls bowling team, things of this nature, the little small things other than the big three. Football, basketball, baseball, which always gets more attention. Okay? But y'all take on these little things that people forget, banging and stuff like that. And just, y'all are such great ambassadors. I am so proud to be your person. Kenneth, I appreciate what you do as far as the proof is this city is beautiful because of what you do and what the guys at the county do, Tim Hales and all of that. And the first responders, I mean, we see what California's going through with the fire department and we see that. And, you know, I worked in the snow ninety-three, I was against the payday, and that was our own days, you know? Because you have a bunch of heads that want to go out there and drive on closed roads, you know, and we'd have to go get them out and everything. But, and keep them in the prayers, but with that being said, I want to end mine talking about prayer. I want to talk about a friend of ours who's going to hear about me the better. Keep her in your prayers. She's got some health issues. She probably started bringing her stuff up because she don't like doing that. But, you know, we all need prayers every now and then. And keep her in the prayers. And we were at the rodeo last week and I heard something so profound during a prayer at the Professional Bull Rider Association, the J I in Bonham. The way we were praying, and as we got to talking about January twentieth, how this country flipped the script. How this country said, it's time for us to get back to the basics. And the quote he said, and it stuck with me, was, it's, Lord, it's going to be the great day when we have our new found leaders who will fall to their knees and pray for guidance. And let's keep that in mind, January twentieth comes, hopefully, the new administration and the new people in the houses in it will pray to God for guidance instead of going on to these woke issues or these issues that do not really apply, in my opinion. And Mayor, I'm for it.
Monday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, City Hall will be closed in observance for Martin Luther King Day. Government will be on schedule Monday through Friday. Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, R S D P will start their free tax service. It will begin at the community center each Wednesday and Thursday from eleven-thirty to three-thirty. Thursdays have been added for twenty twenty-five. The last day will be April ninth of twenty twenty-five. Alamo County Tag Office in City Hall will be open Monday through Wednesday. We're trying to get that changed so that we can go to a five-day week. And we encourage you that if you have any complaints, that you would send those up to the city courthouse or the county courthouse and talk to Ms. Becky Morgan, our supervisor of the tag office. And we would encourage you to do that. Tim, Tim Hales over in the sheriff's department and Sheriff Horton, you know, they put a lot of effort into seeing to the opportunity, not only for those prisoners to rehabilitate themselves by coming out and working and doing community hours, but it actually is the cleanup program that propels us forward every year in keeping our city clean. And I'm thankful for Kenneth and the way he treats those guys with absolute dignity. And we're going to continue to do that and appreciate that, that program. Gary, I appreciate what you do. I had a chance to call Gary just a few weeks ago when we had a very, very dire situation in the city. And you showed up and it meant the world. It changed that whole situation of calm and peace, not only to those people that were suffering, but also for our place and for our responders. And I appreciate you more than you could ever know. Our snow days, there's no doubt that our police was involved heavily. As a matter of fact, I see Scott Overfield, our captain of patrols, asked Scott, he was transporting nurses to the hospitals. And, you know, that's one of those things that we don't really think about is that, you know, how do people get back and forth to work that are absolute essential employees? And that's done through a little cooperative effort that's singled out by our E-nine-one-one and our EMA. And those guys are going out and they're delivering our caregivers to the appropriate location so that they can do their critical work. And I appreciate the place department for that. Our fire department did very, very well. We were lucky that we didn't have an increase in fire calls. That's something that always worries us, is that we're going to be caught in a situation where geographically or topographically, we can't get to a place and we end up having to give up structures because of that. And from twenty-five years being a firefighter, I've been in that situation where we just couldn't get close enough to be able to help people. And that is the most helpless position that a firefighter can be in. And we didn't have that thankfully. Our street department just were absolute rock stars. Michael Stevens and I got together, we put, just, I really just turned him over and said, hey, look, go and do what you've got to do with your department. He brought in the appropriate amount of people. Our volunteer level of people that decided that they would just come in because they saw the need for our city was incredible. We missed their snow day with their kids and their family so that they could be here to make sure that we kept our roadway clear and kept our people safe. And I appreciate that. And I tip my hat to the street department. The EMA, Derek Lumberd over at the EMA, he put on a county-wide meeting for all us and told us exactly how we needed to operate during that time and that. for all I seen and told us exactly how we needed to operate during that time, and that uh, that came off as flawlessly as possible. And I just have to really um, give a big time accolade to to that E M A department. They're small, they're absolutely underfunded, and uh, they need help and they uh, they need guidance, and I'd love to see them sign to the county so that they could get better out of what they do, and um, and that would be my vote for that. Uh, also with uh, our E nine one one, Will Reed put together a plan uh, with 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 the ability to fragment off of that plan and know that we were going to be able to communicate from department to department, city to city, and county uh, into the surrounding areas. And so we had a regional type of communication system set up, and the only way that we could put that thing together was the fact that we put a very dedicated and extremely, extremely qualified person in that E nine one one director position, and Will Reed. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we return. Is there any discussion? Mike Overham, we appreciate you. Thank you, Geraldson.